Our acting clerk this evening, April.
Alder O'Connor.
Here.
Alder Spate.
Here.
Alder Wood.
Here.
Alder Bussie.
Here.
Alder Holmquist.
Here.
And Alder Kitzler.
Here.
And Mayor Miller.
Here.
Please rise and pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes of the October 17th meeting? Move approval.
Second.
There's a motion and second. Are there any corrections or deletions?
I just.
Yes.
I just had one, although I am concerned about the water quality issues at Winnequa Park. I didn't actually make that comment in regard to the.
And where is that?
Sorry, page three of the minutes. That first paragraph, second or third line, it says, "All the Kitzlers concerned about water quality issues in Winnequa." I didn't mention that.
That was your stand-in, I think, was talking about that.
I even re-watched the YouTube.
You got that?
I think so.
All right. Anything else? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The minutes have been approved. We do have two registrants for appearances this evening. The first is asking for a budget amendment by Peter McKeever, former Alder Peter McKeever, and Paul Moldner. And they would like to speak in favor of something. Welcome home. Yep, you did. Welcome, gentlemen.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak for a minute. In the 27 years I've lived in Monona, this is the first time I've ever appeared before the city council. Kathy Thomas was not here to ask me a penetrating question.
We can dial her in. We'll Skype her.
It's the first time. I'm here to ask you to approve an amendment to the budget for a program called Bird City. I've got some little brochures and a little piece of paper here. I'll pass out in a moment. There are 99 cities, municipalities across the state that have joined this program and become bird cities. And Monona has an opportunity to become the 100th one. It's a program to do bird education and bird conservation within communities, to make the communities more aware of birds and programs that are going on in the community. We've asked for a budget amendment, I asked Alder Wood to put in a budget amendment for $500 to provide some contingency funds for this. We will come back to you later and ask you to adopt a resolution to enter this program. This is not a commitment to join the program. This is simply a contingency request, because it's budget time, to give us a request to appear before the appropriate committees in the city. I assume it's Park and Rec and maybe Sustainability, and we can decide who else. And talk to them individually about the program and see how they feel about it. And if they support it, then come back to the full council for a resolution to adopt it. Part of the program would be to involve some other partners, such as the Alder Leopold Center. I do a lot of work with the Wisconsin Society for Ornithology. They would presumably be a partner. I was asking earlier this evening about a Christmas bird count here in Monona. I think there has been one for years, but I frankly don't know who does it. And we'll dig up some more information on that and things like that. So that's the idea. I'll pass out this brochure and this piece of paper. I brought with me Paul Moldner, who lives at Maple Bluff, helped get Maple Bluff involved in the program and has worked with a number of communities around the state and getting them involved if you have any questions. Paul is less, something just short of enthusiastic about this program, I would say. And he might say a couple of words here while I pass this out. But that's really the request. It's a pretty nominal sum of money. At this point, we wouldn't expect it necessarily to be spent. There's a nominal application fee to get into the program. I think it's $100.
I don't know if you can answer it, Peter or Paul, but in talking, I think everyone's wide open to it. But what I hear from staff is it's pretty daunting, the amount of labor. So it's not so much a financial cost, but the time to do the application from what we got from Jake and from. April, can you give us an idea of what we would get? I know we're a tree city, but we don't do anything to be a tree city. What do we have to do to be a bird city?
I think we could frankly do most of it for you.
That's what we were hoping to hear.
I frankly think that we can do most of it for you. And because the holiday season is coming up and such, I would anticipate that we would get to this in the winter and early spring. Would be my idea when we would really tackle it.
Okay.
But I think that we could probably do it. I know that Jake has been concerned about how much time it takes. And it came up rather suddenly, because there was this opportunity to be number 100. We may or may not be that. We might be number 101 or 102 or something. But I think it would be a real feather, pun intended, in the city's hat, to join the program.
Mr. Moldner, anything you would care to add?
Just so people have something real to associate with this, I brought a friend here. You know that call when you hear it?
Oh, there you go.
It's supposed to be illegal. The call is real. It's recorded off a Cardinal app. This is what we use for bird education all the time. We get involved in a lot of it in Madison, in Maple Bluff, in the community, and it's the Madison area generally. And there's a bunch of partners that help me meet things happening with nature recreation and birding and other things. Citizen science. So it kind of makes people more aware of what's already going on and also opportunities. These guys were, are Monona residents, I don't know if they still are, but there was a mess about the Ahara.
They're here right now. They're in front of the East Side Club going after coots all day.
Oh, yeah, they love the coots. So anyway, enough said on that guy. This is what Bird City kind of give you a sign. They don't give you this one. I think Madison Parks got this one made. But basically, they give you a nice sign. So we'll be presenting this to the committees, this kind of information. But basically, it's a big plus. It's like Tree City. Frankly, you're probably doing, Monona, a wonderful community, wonderful nature, probably doing everything already. It's more of a, I'll just say one thing, it's more of a recognition than a requirement to do a lot. And if you decide to do more, it provides guidelines where you might want to consider opportunities, that kind of thing. And those, again, would be with partners. In accomplishing that, we can give you more on that within a proposal. The only other thing I'd say is the partner liaisons are what makes it work. Alder Leopold from Bryan here, one of the naturalists came tonight. We were out this afternoon with a bunch of students down here by the Monona Wetland Conservancy in Nine Spring Bird. I saw your university thing just ties into that general idea of engaging the community. We're closely with the, Paul, we went with the head of Nelson Institute on some of these programs, and they love reaching out to communities. So again, I think a lot of the work can be done by partners.
If we can hold you to the volunteer effort of helping walk us across the finish line, is all I would ask.
My wife says all I do is volunteer.
And Alder Wood listened well to your request, and I see we have that budget amendment before us. Although we will not deal with it tonight, but shortly.
Thank you for your time and good luck with the budget.
Thank you. Thank you for visiting. Next, we have Brendan Cornell of the Fire Department here to discuss the Fire Department budget. Welcome. Welcome.
Hi, council, mayor. Thanks for allowing me the chance and opportunity to speak. Just a brief history. Been on the Fire Department here now for four and a half years and was really involved in the ad hoc committee, which got us our previous two staffing the last time around, and put a lot of time and effort into just doing some research and running some numbers and stuff like that. And knowing this year right now that the addition of our additional personnel, according to the ad hoc committee, is not currently in the budget as I believe right now. And I just wanted to give the council some information and whoever else is listening in the city. Just kind of, we gave a lot of numbers last year on our staffing and data and volunteerism and where we're at with average people per calls. And we're up on volunteers. We're getting really good averages, but we still have those occasional calls where we don't have the adequate number of people. And I'm up here tonight in front of you guys to ask the council and the city of Monona that really, I really feel strongly that we need to focus on getting our engine staffed for the city of Monona. Our ambulance is only getting busier. Right now, we're currently 178 calls more than we were last year for the ambulance. So that's a pretty significant number, even just day to day and where we're at. And we still got a couple of months left to go into this year. So with those increases and with our current staffing levels, only there's certain days we're supposed to have three people on, full-time staff, 66% of the time. But because our daily minimum is only two, if somebody takes vacation or sick or whatever, just depending upon how the schedule allows, we're only actually staffing those three people 40% of the time. So not even half the time with those additional two personnel. So what that means is that leaves a lot of uncovered time at the station where there isn't anybody there if the ambulance is on a call. And so this is a number that I feel the council needs to hear. And so I went through and looked at every single call, and I looked outside of our office hours. So if the chief is not there, and when the med unit goes on a call, there's nobody there at the station. And the reason why this is an important number is because when we're not there, our response times double. And we go from being out the door in one or two minutes to being out the door from anywhere from four to eight minutes and sometimes even longer, and with sometimes not the appropriate amount of staff. So looking at that, this last year, so far this year, we've had 320 calls outside of business hours, where if that med unit leaves, there is zero people at the station. And on an average of about an hour per call, some take longer, some are shorter. But with an average per call, that 320 calls equals about 13 days and a little bit more. So right now, if you were to look at that, if the council is okay with the number, right now, if you look at it in a total, we're, the station is uncovered for a total of 13 days, where there's zero people at the station. And again, just feel really strongly that it's a life safety thing, it's a liability thing, and the council really needs to, I understand things are tight this year and really need to look at it for the future as well. And focusing on getting our engine staffed, because the ambulance can't do it all with just the two people. We're getting busier and busier. And I'm not asking for all career personnel. I'm asking for that engine to be staffed in some way with probably a combination of paid-on-call, paid-on-premise, full-time staff. But really focusing on getting that engine staffed, and not just with two, but with four. And make that an end goal for the council and for the city, to make sure that that engine is adequately staffed with the right amount of people. So with that, again, we have plenty of data to back all this stuff up, but we went through that last year. I think you know that we have the need. But it's, again, I want to give you guys that number, you know, 13 days of nobody's at the station. So that means our response times, there's volunteers that may be available. But for example, we had a call on a Saturday night after a Badger game, and, you know, we get two or three people that are there in the station. It's a structured fire to McFarland, and it took 16 minutes for three people to get to the station. So it wasn't even a full crew. And so it's just something that I really feel strongly about and feel that the city needs its adequate protection and give, I believe, what the community thinks they're getting, give them what they believe they're getting. If you have any more questions, like I said, I've compiled the data. We're way busier and we're just continuing to get busier. So with that, again, feel very strongly about the addition of the staffing.
Alder Spate.
I just want to ask the question to clarify, have things gotten better since we've added the two staff members to the force?
Yep.
So, I mean, are there fewer days? I mean, you point out the 13 days, like, do we know two years ago how many days we went with?
It'd be a lot more than 13, because we just had, we always had two as a minimum. And so right now, like I said, 66% of the time. So we initially, it takes two people on the ambulance, and then that extra day with those two additional personnel we put on last year, with those addition of those two, two out of three days, because we're working those 24-hour shifts, two out of three days will have three people on. So 66% of the time, there's a person there to at least drive the engine. The engine's not staffed with four people. That's just somebody there to drive the engine. Doesn't mean that it's staffed. Doesn't mean that that's right necessarily. I mean, I think most of us would all agree that if we had an unlimited budget, there'd be three other people on that engine with that one person. And feel very strongly about that. But again, our minimum staffing is only two per day. So if somebody takes vacation or somebody's off, you know, we'll go down to two. So a lot of times, again, that's where that number comes in, only 40% of the time, even though we put two on, 40% of the time, we're still, that's when we're at three people, is 40% of the time.
Alder Bussie.
So if, if there's a, ambulance is out, and there's a call, and you have somebody there. There's one person on a truck. There still needs to be more people responding, correct?
Yep.
How long does it take them to get there?
It can range from anywhere to a couple, three minutes, and depending upon the call, most of.
A range?
Yep.
What would a range be? I mean, an adequate number of people to do something. What would a range be?
NFPA standards state that you need to have, you know, four people en route to a structured fire within four minutes, or be en route within two minutes and on scene from the time you go en route to the time you get there within four minutes, with four people. So there's times where a lot of our volunteers, it's a big mix, because some of our volunteers respond directly to the scene. Some come to the station and get their gear and get on the truck. But at that point, they're no longer getting on the initial engine, they're getting on a second engine. It's a complicated thing to try to understand, because there's so many variables to it. And the data's very hard to pull just because of that, because the engine leaves with just a few people. So there's some people that will get on scene and be waiting for the engine. But again, like I said, we've had plenty of calls where, you know, our response times, so if the ambulance is gone and somebody has to drive the engine, our response times usually double. They go from being out the door within one or two minutes and getting on scene within four minutes after that to going en route possibly six, eight minutes, and then getting on scene at about the 12-minute mark for a call.
Any additional questions or clarification from Brendan? All right. Thank you very much. Thank you for.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Your service. That, unless there's anyone else for appearances. Public hearing. Is there, well, I guess that was the public hearing. It was regarding budget issues, so that, I'll declare that closed. Consent agenda, we have a number of operator licenses. Is there a motion for approval?
So, second.
Take your pick on the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Licenses have been approved. Council action items under unfinished business. One A is consideration of resolution 16-10-2127, approving the seven-year agreement with advanced disposal for automated curbside solid waste and recycling collection, brought forth by the Public Works Committee. Is there a motion for approval? Move approval. There's a motion and second. Mr. Stefani.
Thank you, mayor. There's nothing new to report on this topic from the first reading on October 17th. We did receive proposals on September 21st from three companies, Advanced Disposal, Waste Management, and Pelletary for this RFP. The Public Works Committee reviewed it at the October 5th meeting, came away with a recommendation of a seven-year contract for advanced disposal. Like I said, there's nothing new since October 17th, so unless there's any questions.
Any questions? Hearing done. Would the city administrator please call the roll?
Sure. Alder Wood.
Aye.
Alder Bussie.
Aye.
Alder Holmquist.
Aye.
Alder Kitzler.
Aye.
Alder O'Connor.
Aye.
And Alder Spate.
Aye.
The contract is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you for your hard work on that, Dan. Congratulations. New business. Item two A is consideration of resolution 16-11-2130, approval to fund a high deductible health plan option, brought forth by the Director of Administrative Services, better known as Leah Kimmel. I will note that this was approved at Personnel Finance earlier this evening. Leah?
Actually, I believe it was tabled with an amendment.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. It was tabled. My apologies.
Thank you, Mayor Miller. As we were working with our broker, Hausman Johnson, starting this summer to review healthcare options for our employees for next year, we actually did end up getting a great renewal with Physicians Plus and negative 4.5% renewal. But we also looked at the idea of adding a third health plan option, a high deductible health plan option as an option for our employees. We currently offer two options, an HMO option and a point-of-service option, which are pretty similar options. HMO option has no deductible, and it has office visit and drug copays if employees stay in the Physicians Plus network. And then the point-of-service option has a fairly small deductible, I think it's a $500 family deductible, plus copays, office visits, and coinsurance. But employees are allowed to leave the Physicians Plus network to seek care if they'd like. In looking at a high deductible option, we thought that that is an option that we should explore, and it actually makes sense to offer that type of option to employees. It makes sense for us as the city as well as employees, because it could save both, it will save both of us money. Will definitely save the city money, because the premiums are less, and it could save certain employees money, depending on what kind of healthcare expenses they have in the course of a year. So if you look at one of the handouts. Guys, can you turn on the camera for me?
Yep. We have a really good camera operator next to you if you need help with it.
Do I?
Yeah. Oh, that's really good.
There we go. So you can see, these are 2017 health rates that we have for each of our options. We looked at two different high deductible options. A $1,500 single, $3,000 family option, and then a $2,600 single, $5,200 family option. Those are where the annual premium per employee, so this is the city's cost of health insurance premiums come in. And you can see that that option that we're recommending there is the $1,500, $3,000 option. So for every employee who opts into the high deductible health plan over the HMO, we're saving $1,200 on a family premium and a couple hundred dollars on a single premium. And here's why I think that both parties can save money, potentially save money on this option. So quickly, a little chart here for you. Sorry, that's a little bit hard to read, but. So let's pretend that we have a typical employee that is currently in the HMO plan with family coverage. And that employee, let's say, in the course of a year, has eight clinic visits. They use two generic drugs every month, one brand-name drug every month, and then they pay their 10% premium share that employees pay of the premium. Their out-of-pocket cost in healthcare for that year is going to be a little over $2,600. With the high deductible health plan, they're going to pay the retail price of those things up until the deductible is met. And then they don't pay any copays or sharing on anything after the deductible is met. The annual premium is less. Their share of the premium is then obviously less as well. And they're actually going to see a little over $500 savings than what they would have seen under the HMO plan. So the city is saving $1,200 in premiums for that employee, and the employee is saving $500. Now, it's not going to work that way for every employee. I think probably the employees who see the most savings are employees who have a lot, you know, use healthcare a lot and have a lot of out-of-pocket copays and drug copays. Or also those employees who don't use a lot of healthcare, and they won't need to spend their deductible. And then the other component to this program is we would offer it in conjunction with a health savings account or an HSA account. So those employees can put that deductible money in that health savings account, and then if it's not spent in that year, they can carry it over for healthcare expenses in other years.
Do you want to explain why we did table it at Personnel Finance?
And the reason that Personnel and Finance tabled it was in the last, now therefore be it resolved, paragraph, they wanted to see us add that we would be funding this deductible, 75% of the deductible, for the 2017 contract year, so that we can review this every year as our healthcare needs change and decide on a year-to-year basis how we want to fund this plan.
Questions? Alder O'Connor?
Just curious, do you know if there are quite a few people who'd be interested in this?
We haven't presented this to employees. Actually, this is the first time the department heads are hearing this presentation tonight. But we are in the process of scheduling employee meetings, so that if and when it passes this group, we can get it out in front of the employees. I think it really is going to be an issue of employees sitting down with their healthcare, you know, records for the year and figuring out what makes more sense for them.
We have a little more breadth and depth with Hausman Johnson now. You know, giving us a lot of options and opportunities, and also the support for those individual meetings. That when, just with a single individual agent, it wasn't quite as, I won't say easy, but Eric did a good job. But we have a lot more broader services available to us. All right. If there are no further questions, thank you very much, Leah. Item.
Mayor?
Yes.
What's in the budget for this year? Any of the potential savings that?
They are not.
No.
Okay. So if this does get passed, there'll be an added cost and some savings, right?
There will be no added costs.
Okay.
There will be potential savings if employees enroll.
The example you gave was for a single, for a family. Does the math still work?
Yes. The math works for either.
Thank you.
We can only go better if people elect to take this.
Right.
But that's, we're only guessing at this point in time whether they will. But we had two people taking it similar or something before. Okay. Thank you. Item two B is consideration of resolution 16-11-2131, adopting the 2017 operating budget and establishing a tax levy. This is the first read tonight. We've invited the public to come forth with any of their concerns or considerations. Mark had asked if it was necessary, but for any amendments, we had, he handed out tonight, his two amendments. Just so the public knows what they are, is one is a housekeeping, because we did not receive approval from the state for gypsy moth spraying. I know some neighborhoods will be chagrin, but, so we had budgeted, thinking that that would happen, and because it's not, there's an amendment to remove that $10,000. And then, as we heard earlier this evening from former Alder McKeever, that there's an amendment to put a $500 placeholder amount for city participation in the Bird City program. Alder Kitzler?
I just had a question for the first amendment in the budget. We have $11,000, and we're only taking out $10,000.
For gypsy?
Yeah.
Mark? So you'll bring cleaned up ones next meeting? All right. And Mark, so next, the Wednesday before, when do you want the final, final chance for amendments to be provided to you?
If we get the final number, final ones before it goes into the packet, it'd be Thursday.
So that'd be Wednesday?
Wednesday by 5:00. But if, you know, comes down to.
Not next Wednesday, but the following Wednesday.
Yeah, yeah. But again, if you have something that comes over the weekend, we'll just hand it out that day, all the final ones, so.
That helps when you shoot those out. I mean, this allows people to know.
Yeah. So we'll put what we have in the packet, and any times there's an update, we'll send it out or bring the final to the meeting.
Since staff is here, does anyone have any follow-up questions? Or have you been, you've been able to get those all answered on your own? That's fine. But, okay. All right. Moving on to item two C is consideration of resolution 16-11-2132, approving a five-year contract with First Student Incorporated for our city transit services. This was approved at Personnel Finance with one correction in a date or something in there. Mark, you could.
This is the last meeting we approved the proposal. So this is just the contract with First Student. There was three things that the Transit Commission wanted. There was three things that the Transit Commission wanted in the contract, so one of them was on page two, was after dispatch service, it says five o'clock, this is the change the mayor's talking about, one, very top, 1 dash, 1, 1.2, the very last paragraph in there, it says, basically has the, I'm losing where I'm at, but they have to make somebody maintain the telephones until at least six o'clock, it says five o'clock, but it should be six o'clock at night. The other one is on page three, vehicles. This is on 2.1, all the vehicles that were identified in Exhibit 2, Exhibit B, which is the last page of this contract, we wanted to make sure what they put in their proposals, the buses that are going to be used, so the three, the three buses, so there's two buses that run, and there's a backup bus. These are the ones, we want to make sure what they put in their proposal is what they're using with that. And the other one in that same paragraph talks about all vehicles should be equipped with bike racks, is the other third thing that was included in there. Otherwise, it's pretty much a standard contract, and their prices are in there, which was approved. Anybody has any other questions?
Any questions? Alder O'Connor?
Mark, I just had a question about the vehicles provided. Which one of these is going to be the extra?
Dan, could you hang-
703 is the backup.
Because I know we had talked in committee then about having them, they can increase the capacity on that new one, and right now it only holds 12 people.
Yeah.
Are they going to be doing that?
They will be doing that.
Alder Bussie? Any reason this-
Nope.
-I move to suspend the rules, take this item out of order?
There's a motion to suspend the rules, take this item out of order. Is there a second?
No, second.
There's a motion, second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Would the clerk please call the roll? Acting clerk.
Alder Bussie?
Aye.
Alder Holmquist?
Aye.
Alder Kitzler?
Aye.
Alder O'Connor?
Aye.
Alder Spate?
Aye.
And Alder Wood?
Aye.
Alder Bussie?
Move approval with the time change and the reference to Exhibit B and the bike rack thing.
There's a motion to accept the ordinance with the stated changes. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion with the acting clerk. Call the roll.
Alder Holmquist?
Aye.
Alder Kitzler?
Aye.
Alder O'Connor?
Aye.
Alder Spate?
Aye.
Alder Wood?
Aye.
And Alder Bussie?
Aye.
Motion passes. Let's get that logo on the bus, and I don't know if they have a contract. Please, thank you. All right. Reports of committees, commissions, boards, anyone from staff care to report on anything since you're here? No? Alder Kitzler?
No reports.
Alder Holmquist?
No reports.
Alder Bussie?
There will not be a Plan Commission meeting next Monday.
All right. Alder O'Connor?
There will not be a media committee meeting this Thursday, and landmarks are scheduled for next Wednesday at 4:30.
Alder Spate?
There will not be a Parks and Rec Committee meeting tomorrow night, and there will not be a Transit Committee meeting on Wednesday.
Wow. It's small.
Happy election.
Happy election.
Alder Wood?
No report.
City Administrator Little?
Actually, I have a report pretending to be the clerk.
Okay. The clerk is reporting now.
So she just wanted to let you know about the absentee ballot counts, because it was pretty incredible, and we were getting a lot of questions about the statistics. We have 6,249 registered voter, voters, which is an all-time high. There were 1,955 ballots returned to be counted by Saturday, November 5th, with 32 still outstanding. The total absentee ballots requested, 1,987, is also an all-time high. The previous high was 1681. The result is voter turnout of 31% prior to election day. So just an amazing job by our staff. I think we had, how many on Friday? It was over 200 just on Friday, so it was, they've been doing an amazing job processing all of those absentee ballots.
Our goal is, you probably heard, during on WVMO, doing a great job of trying to cheer people to vote, because we are always, I don't know that we've ever been the number one highest voting community in Dane County, but we've been number two, and we, let's go for number one. 92% turnout is the highest Monona has ever turned out to the polls, so nothing wrong with 100%, so get your friends, neighbors, grandparents, spouses to the polls tomorrow, so hopefully we can get there. Does Administrator Little have anything she wants to mention?
No, not anything really as spectacular as that.
All right.
Closing up the year and preparing for the next one.
Nor does the mayor have a report, other than to, again, remind people that you can't complain if you don't vote, and a firm believer will accept all complaints from all these 100% voters this coming year, so. All right. We have one appointment. We have Judy Runk as an election inspector. Is there a motion for approval?
No approval.
Second. Motion, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Judy's approved. Is there a motion for adjournment?
No move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned. Thanks, everyone.